You want to do the roll call?
This will be the roll call for the City Council and the Authority. Councilmember Chris?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Smith? Harris? We have a quorum.
I'll turn the chair over to Kitty at this time.
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting. City Clerk, roll call please.
The roll call for the Housing Authority. Authority member Chris?
Present.
Harvey?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Zito?
Here.
And Smith. We have a quorum.
Councilmember Chris, do we need to, um, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Paris and Vice Mayor Smith. Do we need to do that? For the record?
Yeah, the motion, the motion to excuse isn't required, but procedurally it is preferred.
Okay.
Can we do it for the Housing Authority also? At this time with one motion?
Which is Ron Smith.
Which is Ron Smith.
Should, should be separate motions for the Housing Authority and for the-
Kitty, you still have the gavel, so you want to make the motion first and then we'll go into-
Sure, I'll make a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Ron Smith.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, so moved.
Okay, go ahead now, Karen.
Um, make a motion to excuse Mayor Paris and Vice Mayor Smith from the City Council meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to have a invocation by Pastor Paul Dennis. Welcome. Let's pause for a word of prayer.
Dear heavenly Father, our hearts are full of thankfulness as we reflect on your goodness and kindness to us. We thank you for our country, for the freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for your provisions and protection for us. Please protect and help our men and women who guard our nation. Pray for those who are experiencing difficulties and trials in their lives at this time. We thank you for our elected officials. Your word says that you will instruct them and teach them in the way they should go. You will counsel them with your eye upon them. Give them your wisdom as they serve you in this community. Pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If you could please put our right hand over our hearts, pledge allegiance, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do a presentation to our Ms. Lancaster, could I have her up here, please? Sidney Roth. I want to say a couple things about her. She's been a great Ms. Lancaster. We have a history of a lot of great Ms. Lancasters, and you're just on a long line of them. She goes to a, a lot of events, and if you don't know what that, the dedication that that takes, to go to all the grand openings, to go to all the city events, she does a great job in that, and we thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. So, welcome. Did you want to say a word?
I just can't express my thankfulness to the City of Lancaster for inviting me to all their things. I mean, I definitely couldn't have done it without the mayor and the vice mayor, Mark Bozegi, and everyone has just been so helpful, and I can't express how thankful I am to everyone. Thank you.
Mom, did you want to get a picture?
I got some.
Okay. We're now going to do a presentation by Vern Lawson.
Chairman Chris, and members of the City Council, it's my distinct pleasure tonight to present you with the 2012 CRA Award of Excellence for Community Revitalization for the Boulevard Transformation Project. Under your leadership over the years, we've received a lot of awards, but we think this is special for a couple of reasons. The first is because this is an award for community revitalization. It's a recognition that the downtown project did more than just revitalize the downtown, it's actually helped to revitalize the whole community, and I know the council's interested in spreading the prosperity, community wide that's been created in the downtown. And then secondly, we're proud of this award and this project because it's really been a uniter for this community. When I say uniter, it has united the public and the private sector, the private sector partners that we've had with the Boulevard Association, with Scott Erlich, we've never had a better relation in the history of the City of Lancaster. I've been here for 35 years, and I can't think of a single project that's worked as, as well as this has. But it also has been a uniter of city departments. I think there has been, again, no project that has been more participated by and led by every single department in the city, and so when, you know, we present this award to you, it really is something that, you know, that transcends all departments, and you know, we're all proud of it. With that, we have about a five-minute video that they were able to see. I'm also particularly proud because we were up against groups like Santa Monica, San Francisco, San Diego, Sacramento, and we ended up taking the top prize, so congratulations.
I can't tell you how much I love this Boulevard. It was really a community thing. The entire community came together, and we said, "We're going to build this city in the way we want it to be, in the way that makes us feel good about it." Everybody recognizes this is the commercial place to be. They recognize that this is where you, where people are going.
You can drive down this Boulevard, park in front of the business you want to do business at, get something to eat, go see a movie.
This just gives us one more venue, one more, one more thing to go to, great entertainment, something that we don't have anywhere in the Valley.
It's another asset to the Boulevard that we're going to have a farmer's market. Focus on healthy lifestyles, focus on healthy living, focus on engaging the community, and this does all of that.
The streets of Lancaster, the amount of organization it took to make that happen was truly phenomenal, and they did it with such a small staff. I mean, it was so few people who actually made that event work. I mean, this staff is just unbelievably productive, and it's now a national event within the people who, who raise boat parks.
Another seamless marriage between technology and lifestyle design can be found here at Lancaster's Arbor Court. A more than 300-unit facility located within Lancaster's downtown area, Arbor Court defines a new standard for senior housing.
The recent transformation of the popular 50,000-square-foot Essex House Hotel by the Insight Development and Housing Corporation of America has resulted in a campus offering a variety of impressive amenities, at a monthly cost affordable to most seniors. The complex also houses a 10,000-square-foot health care facility, offering occupational therapy, speech therapy, and other rehabilitation options. Arbor Court also provides an arts and crafts room, sewing and quilt room, and fully-equipped pottery room. Part of the community concept includes Arbor Court Mall. Here, seniors will have a supermarket, discount hair salon, massage parlor, coffee and juice bar, as well as access to AV Bridge Club.
We're going to open up a shop that they will be able to sell their sewing stuff and their pottery and different Christmas items that we're going to create, all of it going back to self-sustain this property, so we don't have to charge anymore.
Lancaster's progressive approach to changing the fabric of its community continues with current designs to renovate the downtown area with restaurants, businesses, public parks, and facilities.
You know, one of the beauties of being here at the farmer's market is one minute you could be buying your vegetables here, and the next minute you could be over here at the Artist Loft Studios listening to some music.
This 21-unit loft complex will bring a unique urban space to the downtown area. Each 1,600-square-foot two-story unit will have four bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a common kitchen area. There will also be 2,000 square feet of indoor-outdoor gallery space for local artists to proudly display their works.
The city has pretty much thrown their noses at the economic situation and said, "Let's go." You know, "Let's go forward, let's do this." The facade improvement program is just another step in the right direction.
The city has the forethought and the foresight as a whole to say, "Small business matters. Let's put the money where people can use it and work and create jobs." Are we taking risks? Sure we are. It's part of business. We're taking a risk, the city's taking a risk, but it's a good one.
We have people in our community that when you hear that siren, they're going out to rush in and do things that your human instinct tells you to turn around and run the other way. This is what the park is dedicated to, American heroes in Antelope Valley.
We're looking at about 13.75 acres total development, that's what the park size is. About seven of those acres are in turf, we've got multipurpose fields, we've got two giant plazas, and the folks down here, between the seniors and people that visit, this is going to be just an absolutely wonderful addition, and it's really going to center our downtown. This is all part of the re, you know, revitalization of downtown.
The mission we've been given is to ensure that the Boulevard is a safe destination for all, and to do that, we've reassigned two deputies to full-time duties on the Boulevard. It's going to be a safe, family place to come and enjoy a little time, do some shopping, go to restaurants, and, and I think that's, what's really important here is that Lancaster is becoming a world-class city, and this is one more step in that direction.
We needed a center, we needed a place that represented the, the center of the city, and I think everybody came together to make that happen. We've saved the city in many, many respects.
That was good. Chairman Chris, I think, if I may interrupt, that was the video that was submitted with the application, correct? Vern, thank you for everything that you've done for the redevelopment agency, and we couldn't have done it without you, and you're a great asset to the city. Thank you. Now, we're going to have a presentation to the city by the City Clerk, Jerry, in regarding the election. Bravo, this is your part.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Christ and council members and housing authority members. Well, as you're aware, we had an election, and we held it on April 10th of just a couple of weeks ago. All notices pursuant to the California Election Code were posted, voting precincts were properly established, and election officers were appointed. The election was held and conducted, votes were cast, received, and canvassed. In addition to the ballots that were received by 8:00 on election night, we also received 433 provisional ballots, which included the vote-by-mail ballots that were dropped off at various precincts. The number of ballots cast at the precincts, except for the vote-by-mail, was 2,554. The number of vote-by-mail ballots cast in the city was 6,117, and the number of provisionals was 433, for a total of 9,104 ballots cast. Total percentage of voter turnout was 14.5%. It's recommended this evening that the council adopt Resolution 1217, reciting the facts of the election, declaring the results, providing by law regarding the election of the mayor and two council members. I am available if you have any questions, and I believe we do have one speaker card. Thank you.
Can we hear from the speaker? Do you know who it is, Jerry?
Yes, it's Michael Reeves.
Michael?
Chairman Chris, councilmember of staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few comments to make about the election. I was a candidate, and I, I'm concerned about two things that occurred in the election. One is the area where the absentee votes were cast, and the other is the employment of one of the candidates for City Council. I have some experience with elections. Last May, I was down below in Los Angeles at the City Clerk's office as they counted absentee votes for local elections. I was coordinator of election. The area at the City Clerk's office was very, very secure. You had to have a badge, you couldn't even get near the ballots. They were stashed away, and even when they started counting them, you couldn't get near them. And our situation is no reflection on anybody. The ballots, our ballots, were accessible. The only security I saw, other than having Britt and Jerry watch them, was a yellow cape on one of the doors. I think we could do better on securing absentee votes in the future. The other thing I'm concerned about is Mr. Graheda, was one of the council candidates, works over at the Allied Arts Building, and I'm just wondering if he is a city employee, and if you are a city employee, can you run for City Council or City Office? And personnel or the Parks Department could tell us if he's a city employee. If so, that's, that's, I don't think that's permitted under the election code. I don't know the city attorney at half of the- So those are my two comments about the, the way we have the absentee votes accessible, and also the employment status of one of our candidates. But other than that, I, I think Jerry and Britt did a great job, and I want to make one more comment on the side. Our city does work, and I had an example of that yesterday, when I called the graffiti people Public Works, and I think within 18 hours or less, they were on 12th Street West, and they eradicated all the graffiti. And I think it's just fantastic. Congratulations, Public Works and the city staff. Our city does work. Thank you.
Jerry, would you like to respond to anything that he says?
Okay.
Sure.
I'll respond because I have the ultimate responsibility. I, I think in every way, this election was run exceptionally well, and while I appreciate some of the compliments, Mr. Reeves, I, I unfortunately take exception to a couple of those. As Mr. Reeves knows, and we've talked, and we could talk again, those ballots are locked up every night. They're opened precisely for the reason so everyone, including the public, can see them. There are never times when they're not visible, when there are not two people watching them. We have to be sworn in to go back there, and in every way, they are secure and open and transparent for the public to see exactly what's happening. They're counted the night of the election and not before, and so I, I'm, I'm just amazed of that comment. Secondly, Mr. Graheda, who I believe Mr. Reeves is talking about, is not an employee of the city. He does work with, I think it's the Cedar Performing Arts Academy, and he does promotions for them and plays and such.
Thank you. Jerry, do you want to respond?
The, the only other thing I would say is the ballots are locked up, they were locked up every single night, not one ballot was left out, and they're locked into a fire-safe vault every night, and then as required by law, they're brought out each day so the public can see the trays of ballots. But every night, they are locked up and secure.
And, Mr. Reeves, I have to tell you that I went in there, and there's no way to get back to the absentee ballots. It's just, just because they're visible doesn't mean they're not secure. Just, okay, so we have a recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 12-17. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Jerry, would you swear in? Councilman Kim Mann and Councilwoman Sondra Johnson, please. Congratulations to both of you.
However you want to do it. You're in charge.
Okay, and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic? You will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. You take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that you will willingly faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter.
I do.
I do. And can we please note for the record that after the swearing-in, that a quorum is still present? And we're going to take a 10-minute break, so the families can get together. We have refreshments in the lobby, in the back for the general public and for the family and for photographs, so we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Is it contemplating or required? The items may be acted upon as a whole or with one motion, a second, or a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items of the consent calendar, you could fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You'll be given three minutes to address your concerns before the agency and/or the council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out, submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda or non-aggendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, are there any items to be removed?
Yes, Chairman Chris, we apologize for the inconvenience, but staff would like to remove item CC2 and bring it back to the next council meeting on May 8th.
CC2?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
I'm going to turn the chair over to Chair Zito at this time.
Do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Housing Authority regular minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, let's vote. And it passes. There's one item on the housing consent calendar. Does anyone have any comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Is there a motion and a second for adoption of the housing consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. I will now turn the meeting over back to Mayor Protem Christ.
Do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the minutes?
I motion that we adopt the second for the minutes.
I'll second that.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, uh, no, we do not.
Okay, let's vote. So we're going to pull CC2, and I would like to pull CC13 for discussion. So can we have a presentation on CC13? Kathy, are you going to do that? Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. The local hiring ordinance was introduced last month and is presented tonight for your approval. The ordinance will support our local residents and local businesses by requiring that contractors and direct subcontractors on public works contracts hire 50% local residents, or that they show a good faith effort to do so. The city will assist contractors with outreach and recruitment in meeting those goals. Staff has drafted an implementation plan and a procedures policy, which will update our bid language to accommodate the ordinance, and also provide a framework for staff and our contractors for this program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any. Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have a speaker for the consent calendar, yes.
Could you call him, please?
Yes, Michael Reeves.
Chairman Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have three items on the consent calendar I'd like to speak on. The first one is CC4, to renew the General Services Agreement between the County of Los Angeles and City of Lancaster for a period of five years. I think we should hold off on this until we have our annual conference with the county, which is usually in the summertime, so that we can ask questions about specific areas before we vote on this. The other one is CC8, the resolution to apply for state fund, grant funds for, under the bicycle transportation account. According to what's mentioned down here on the agenda, we're going to try to get approximately $3 million in grants, and we have to match 10% of it. With the economy the way it is, and other situations in this city, I think would behoove us to, to delay this until the economy approves. I can't see the city spending $300,000 for bicycle lanes when we have all these people out of work up here. The other one is the CC13, the ordinance for local hiring. I, I believe in local hiring. If you go through some of these contracts and things in this, this agenda, you'll find out that outside contractors have done a lot of work. However, creating another layer of bureaucracy and another ordinance is not, in my, my book, going to help us. I, I prefer that we appoint a panel composed of the city manager, one of the council members, and a staff member to review contracts and see if it's possible to hire locally. We don't need to create another level of bureaucracy and confusion, and, and we discussed this before, Councilman Chris, that you admitted it, you know, we're hampered by bidding process, and we, it won't always work. And in the, in the contract itself, it says 50% of the workforce is composed of the Antelope Valley. Well, if they, they get the bid on it, there's no guarantee that we'll get the 50%. Therefore, I, instead of this ordinance, I say appoint a panel of people who review the contracts and see if we can create contracts that are favorable to local hiring. Thank you.
Any comments?
I was wondering if you could share with us a little bit regarding what you just said, how we can kind of review or follow up on the process that we are demonstrating that we're hiring locally. The, the first thing to consider is that we are governed by public contract code, which says, you know, when we're using public funds, we have to go through a certain process. We can put this goal in place and put the program in to monitor it, which we will be doing. Basically, we're going to have a form that will be submitted with the bid package, and the contractor will attest that they've either met the 50% goal, or that they, that they have made a good faith effort to do so, and they will be required to- And they will be required to specify exactly what they've done to meet that good faith effort. You kind of have to balance, when you're using public funds, how far you can go with that goal. So this really provides us an opportunity to meet these types of goals while staying within the legal mandates of the state.
Is there some kind of survey that we would be taking to continuously follow up on, or when we have these meetings, we can follow up on?
We could certainly put some sort of reporting document together. The way that the program is going to be set up, staff will be monitoring, will be requiring the contractor to keep records, not only of the employees that they have and the hours that they work and their residency, but also the proof of that residency and our public work staff as part of their labor compliance that they do regularly on these type of contracts. They will be reviewing that documentation. If there's any indication that the requirements aren't being met, then we will work with them to get them to where we would like them to be. If there's anything that appears to be fraudulent or they're misrepresenting themselves, then there are other sanctions and remedies afforded to the city in the documents.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'd like to hear from the deputy city attorney. I know Mr. Reeves makes comments about layers of government, but again, I think maybe the last time around, we weren't... I thought there was some clarity, but Joe, maybe you could put some specifics legalese, so to speak, about what we can legally do as a city in the state of California?
Sure. Generally speaking, the public contract code requires that public contracts be awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. And so I'm not quite sure how you would craft that type of committee, how that would fit procedurally in awarding a contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. And so the local hiring preference, what that does is, that provides a preference. So the preference that those bidders receive impacts their bid. Those contracts will still be awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder as those bids have been adjusted based on the local hiring preference ordinance. So I'm not quite sure what else I can add to what Kathy said, or if... I'm not sure if that answers your question, but the lowest responsible responsive bidder is who a contract must be awarded to.
All right. That's clarity. I just wanted to make sure that there's... Sometimes people get up and speak, and they seem to believe that there's certain things that we can do or can't do, and we don't get a legal opinion on it. It's just, you know, we read an article or come up with our own ideas. But thank you.
And just to further to answer some of your questions, Mr. Reeves, that there is a review process. The city manager sits down with us and the city council and goes over the different contracts and the different bid packages, and we take a look at them to see what we can do and how we can, you know, further improve them. And you talk about the... You don't want to spend $300,000, but, you know, what we'd like to do is import $3 million into the economy, and we're willing to spend $300,000 to do that. So if we spend $3,300,000 for bike lanes, I think that's a good thing for the city, and this council is going to be proactive in that. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as comprised with the exclusion of CC2, which was requested to be removed.
I second.
Let's vote. It passes unanimously. We're going to open a public hearing on page 1. Is it Rhonda?
Good evening, council and authority members. I'm here today regarding the proposed admission fees and rental fees for the new Lancaster Museum of Art and History, which will open on May 5, 2012. You'll see here before you a few pictures and slides of some of the spaces that we hope to rent with the passage of this resolution. This will actually amend the current facility rental ordinance that exists and add this facility to that existing ordinance. MOA will be one of the premier rental facilities and then event venues in the valley. Our intent with this fee schedule is to recuperate some of the operating costs while making the facility still available to the community members at an affordable rate. It was a challenge when we did some... Attempted to do some apples-to-apples comparisons for like venues because everybody charges a little differently. Some charge per hour, some charge per head, some charge per plate, some charge based on the size of the venue. So what we did is, we actually looked at five other event venues throughout the Antelope Valley and three regional venues and came to the charges that you see before you. Some of the other fees that we're looking at charging for at MOA is actually the admission fees, and those are based on industry standard. And what we're looking at is a nominal fee, again, to help reduce and offset some of the operating costs of the facility. We would be charging $5 for adults, $3 for children and seniors. We also will be participating in Blue Star Days, which will provide a free admission to active military members and their families for the entire summer. That's Labor Day to Memorial Day. Sundays will be free in the facility. We'll be closed on Mondays. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So if anyone is interested in renting the venue, how would they go about doing that?
They contact the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Department. We rent all of the facilities that are in the city's inventory.
And they're giving tours of the facility and all the information that's needed?
Yes. Insurance will be calculated on a case-by-case basis, as will security deposits and things of that nature.
Great. I hear we have a sweet 16 birthday coming up, May 12 or something like that. One of my daughter's friends is excited that she's going to have the first event at the MOA. So thank you, guys, for making her sweet 16 very successful for her.
Thank you. Thank you.
City clerk, do we have any communications?
None other than just one speaker card?
Okay.
Michael Reeves?
Chairman Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, it always concerns me and troubles me that the taxpayers build something and then we're charged to use it afterwards. For example, there's a foreign car dealership over in the auto mall, and when I was president of the... Or a member of the Optimist Club, we used the community room, and they suddenly... And they were renovated, I guess, by the city under redevelopment funds, but they suddenly said they were going to charge us $500 a month to use it. I wish, in this instance, because of this museum and the location, that the first year, the first year of operation, that anybody who wants to use it can use it at just the cost, to turn on the lights and the security, so that we can encourage people to come down and use it, not just people who are in the arts, but other people who are in the community. So we have this great community place right in the middle of the boulevard, and for the first year, we can nab these people in and grab them in, and after they pay minimal fee to use it, I'm sure they'll want to use it again because it's a nice facility. So I would charge them very minimal, almost free, for the first year to gather people and get people to use the facility. Of course, if they have to come to the museum, they might have to pay admission fee, but in the community rooms and the classrooms, I would charge them almost nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I'd like to close the public hearing. We don't have any more speaker cards?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
There's no discussion. I'll move and make a motion to adopt resolution number 12-20.
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business, NB1?
Good evening, council members. I'm here before you with the Boulevard Demonstration Shuttle Project. It's for your consideration. It's using Proposition A money, which is an allocation that we get for the city for transportation, and it's limited funding that can only be used for transportation purposes. So what this project is, is it's taking our destination Lancaster hotels... There's eight of them currently that are in the program, and moving the visitors staying in the hotels to the boulevard and throughout town, to the other hotels. So even though we're calling this the Boulevard Shuttle Project, it actually will move people over to Cinemark Theaters. You can get off at the Homewood Inn Suites over there. You can get off at the Avenue K Hotels and go to Marie Callender's or go to the Target Center. There's a lot of transportation happening with this project that will move you throughout town. This project is in its partnership with the Antelope Valley Transit... I'm sorry. The Antelope Valley Airport Express, and Tom Miller is here, if you have any questions for him. But he's going to be providing a service, a wonderful driver, I understand, that will also give some local history and tell you about the sights as you're going through town. This is a free service to the people that are staying in our hotels. The pilot program or demonstration project is going to run from the first weekend of May through July 15, and that time period was chosen so that we can cover three of the soccer tournament weekends, so we'll capture that crowd. We'll also capture the business crowd after hours, so the shuttle will run from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. during the week, Tuesday through Friday. So after business, you can go down to the boulevard and have dinner and drinks, or you can go to the LPAC and see a show there and have coffee afterwards and catch the shuttle and come back to your hotel nice and safely. It will also be running on Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and that will accommodate some of the summer crowd that we get here visiting and some of the weekend crowd as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just when they want this service, is it going to be available for them at the hotels only?
Yes. The pickups are going to be at each of the eight hotels. And those hotels, just so that you know, are Spring... I'm sorry. Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, Comfort Inn Suites, Holiday Inn Express, Oxford Inn Suites. Those are all the ones over on K near the freeway. Homewood Suites by Hilton, Hampton Inn and Suites, those are the ones by the Jet Hawk Stadium. There's going to be two stops downtown. One right here, outside of the Chase parking lot on Fern, heading south. And then the other one will be on date, next to the backside of the library, heading north, so that it gets you to either end of the boulevard that you want to go. And then it'll go over to Townhouse Motel and Inn of Lancaster on Sierra Highway, and then it'll do a loop back. So the loop is going to take approximately 45 minutes, so you can count on the shuttle showing up at your hotel every 45 minutes.
Yeah, it sounds like a good segue, and especially a good use of Prop. A funds because obviously it's got a limitation on how that money can be used, and if it doesn't, then we lose it, so...
I think I have a question and I have a comment with AV Airport Express. Thank you for doing this for our community. It's just, we're all so proud of our city, and now that we're able to actually have a tour of our city, even us locals who have been here for decades, many, many years, Marv, right?
Right.
That we don't even know all of our history, and so I'm actually very excited about that. That's going to be very, very interesting. And the transportation from your hotel to our community is going to be not just a nice way to see what our community has, but it's also a safe way for people who are visiting our town to really be safe with transportation. They can drink as much wine as they'd like at Port Avino and then go back to their hotel safely. So I think it's a wonderful program, so I'm looking forward to it, and I think we'll all take advantage of that. Yeah.
Can you talk about the process that we went... So we... How we found the AV Express and how we went through the AVTA to get to this?
Yes. We started, first of all, working with AVTA, and at the time, this was over a year ago, they didn't have buses available to do this type of service. In the meantime, we did an RFP process, and we had AVTA responded. We also had Tom Miller, AV Airport Express, respond, and went through the whole RFP process like public agencies do. And out of that, we chose to start working with Tom Miller and AV Airport Express and have been working with them ever since. In the meantime, Antelope Valley Transit Authority also discontinued their dial-in-ride vans and went to a different service. So then they had vans available, so we started talking to them again as our transportation agency for the city. And it turned out that their... The cost to run those would be substantial. It was about double what Antelope Valley Express could do for us. So we are recommending going with Antelope Valley Express, who is used to the door-to-door service already, so they're used to pulling into the hotels off the streets, don't need a designated spot to do so.
So we have done our due diligence to get to this point?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great. Jerry, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have one. Michael Reeves?
Chairman Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. Initially, I was very upset about the expenditure of $30,000, even though it's Proposition A funding for the shuttle. But reflecting on it, I think the shuttle idea is something that I'll talk about on the non-agenda items, but I think this is a turning point in transportation for this area. If you recall, when we had the Poppy Festival, prior to it, they asked people to use public transportation to get to the Poppy Festival. And of course, you know, the weather out here, we either have extreme hot, extreme cold, or windy, and I don't think you're going to find very many people who have cars that are going to be waiting out for a regular bus. So this, even though it's costing, even though, you know, I'm upset about the cost and so forth, I think that it's beginning of something that could really help this community. I know down below in Los Angeles, you know, I was a frequent bus rider, even though I drive, and these shuttle buses are all over the place. They're fantastic. We may be on to something here, and I hope that this works out, and I hope $30,000 is well spent, and I think it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Any more comments? Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to appropriate to $30,000 the recommendation of Prop. A funding to account number 2074714271.
I second.
Let's vote. We're going to move on to CA1, the discussion of the planning commission appointments and the city council position nominations. I do know that Mayor Perez will make those appointments in May, so any people out there that want to serve on the planning commissions and the current planning commissioners, for them to put their applications in. Mr. Bozigan, do you have anything else for that?
No, I don't know if you spoke to the mayor, if he asked you to convey anything about any other nomination or anything?
Okay. No other nominations at this time. CA1, Vice Mayor Smith is not here today, so we'll remove the CA1. Lancaster Financing Authority, there's no action. Power Authority, no action. The Successor Agency, no answer. City manager?
Yes, sir. With apologies, there's been a lot going on, so this will probably take a couple of minutes. We're going to have a couple of staff members. First, I'd like to talk about a couple of things very briefly. In terms of the election, I'd like to thank the community, the volunteers, the precinct workers, a lot of times don't get the credit they deserve. One of the things about having a local election is it really has a community feel to it, but I think people tend to think a local election is somewhat different in terms of the requirements. It's not... The only difference is, is it's more visible, it's more transparent, and the people doing it are people you see every day, so they truly care about it. And really proud of our staff, the work we did. I'd like to... I'd like to particularly thank Jerry and her staff for leading the effort up. It was a, really a well-run election, so thank you all. In terms of our museum, we are exceptionally excited for the museum opening. With us today, we have four of our folks with the museum. We have, I never pronounce Dan's name right, so he's now officially Dan V., is the president of our foundation.
[laughing]
A name I haven't butchered yet, but I'm probably going to, our curator, Andy Campione.
Close.
Close. And then two that I can absolutely get, Michelle Shaver from the foundation and Amanda Haas from the foundation. They're here, they're busily working on a lot of things, including a event co-hosted by the mayor, private event, and the foundation fundraiser to open the museum on the 4th. And then the big day on Saturday, May 5th, when the museum's open to the public, people will be astounded at how beautiful and how much this is going to add to this community. So we are really, really looking forward to this. And thank you all for helping out, you guys did an amazing job. So thank you. And then what I'd like to do is first ask Robert to speak about a pretty successful oil and e-waste roundup we had and an incident with graffiti. And then Elizabeth Brubaker will talk about a waste tire roundup that we had. And then Rhonda will finish off speaking briefly about the Poppy Festival. And Robert brought props.
Well, I'll just tell you a couple of quick things. Mayor Protram Chris, city council and authority members, psychologists have proven that certain kinds of environment invite crime. For example, when we allow graffiti to remain, it sends a message that we don't care. Criminals see it as a more of a favorable environment to commit crime, and the rest of us feel it's unsafe. So I'm really glad and thankful that our city council, that you clearly articulate and enforce a public behavior and order that, and standard that disencourages criminal activity. And so as such, we are very aggressive about removing graffiti and prosecuting vandals. Sunday, April 15th, a person tagged the Boulevard in 72 locations, scrawling his moniker on signs and storefronts. An estimated $35,000 worth of damage was done. Within three hours, our staff had jumped on it and removed all graffiti. Our crews did an exceptional job, and I just want to acknowledge them by name. I want to thank Greg Wilson, Robert Sandine, Joe, Frank, and Dave Hobbs for showing that our community cares. I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department, who only two days later, on Tuesday, arrested this suspected perpetrator. Their quick action surely prevented further acts of vandalism. So I wanted to just thank you for being so aggressive with graffiti. Secondly, we held a very successful electronic waste, e-waste and used oil event on Saturday, April 14th and Sunday, April 15th. It surprises us how well it went. We had a line of people each day before we opened. The city received numerous compliments for our efforts. I want to thank the Parks Department, who made it more appealing by providing free admission tickets to the Poppy Festival for those participants. All our costs for that event were paid for in full by Cal Recycle Grants. 386 vehicles came to deliver electronic waste. We collected over 31,000 pounds of televisions, computers, laptops, and household electronics. 138 people brought us 1,494 gallons of used oil. Staff handed out used oil change kits, and that's what I brought for you today, that we provided people. So these are designed to prevent oil spills and to help protect our environment. There's a funnel and a place to put your oil filter and to collect your oil. It's reusable, so if you change your oil, quite honestly, I want to let people know that they can come to our maintenance yard, bring their used oil, we will give them one of these kits, and it helps our environment.
Can you tell them where the yard's located?
It's on Avenue H, Seventh Street West, right near the Overpass. We're open from 7:00 to 5:00 daily. And we're working so that we'll set up a collection center that's open all the time, so that people can come whenever they're, whenever they want. Just a little more good news, that the city will receive over $1,200 for the used oil from the state and over $7,000 for the electronic waste that we collected. So we save it from going into the dump and, or sometimes people will put it out in the desert, but this is much better for everybody. So I want to let you know about that. And lastly, Liz Brubaker has been doing some really good work with a tire amnesty program, so it's okay. I'd like to introduce her.
I don't have any nice visuals, I'm really sorry. If I had brought it, I might not have been able to carry it, even though I've been working out.
No used tires, huh?
No, sorry. This is our second year of doing Cal Recycle Grant for the tires, and the portion that we did this weekend was an amnesty portion of the grant, which people from all over the Antelope Valley can bring their tires. What that does, and what we're hoping, is it prevents people from dumping tires in the desert. Along with that grant, we also have the tire pickup, which our officers go out every Thursday and pick up tires throughout the Antelope Valley that are designated as targeted areas for dumping. Another part of that grant is the enforcement and investigation. So we have been very successful at deterring and trying to eliminate a problem that occurred in the valley a lot. You used to see a lot of tires, and I think now you see even less. And it would really help, we do this every year, so call Code Enforcement, and we'll try and give people the dates, it's always around April, because there's a lot of people who commute, they change their tires, and they don't always know what to do with them, they're in their garage, they're in their yard, and those are the ones that we have the amnesty program for, for those people that may not know what to do with their tires. So we need all the help we can get, and if you want, call Code Enforcement when you see tires in the desert, and we'll go pick them up. So we had a really successful Saturday, and I don't know what our tonnage is yet, they're measuring it, but we did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I was trying to think of a great segue between tires and recycling. And the only thing I came up with is we have a saying in the Parks Department, that trash doesn't lie. And we had a lot of trash this weekend and a lot of recycling this weekend, primarily water bottles, because it was a little warm. But I'm here to tell you that Poppy Festival was a wonderful success with the support of the entire city. We had attendance of over 48,000. That includes ticketed citizens, complimentary tickets, volunteers, performers, car show entrance, sort of the whole gamut of those that came through the gates. Over 400 food, 400 vendors, those are food, arts and crafts, live entertainment shows. And I really would like to thank all the various departments that make it a success, everybody from finance to public works who's out there the week before, to the volunteers on patrol with the Sheriff's Department. So, and we're still cleaning up a lot of the trash, but a lot of recyclables and things like that. And I do want to actually thank the maintenance team, both public works and the Parks Department, for keeping the park beautiful and going through all that trash all weekend and keeping it just a really enjoyable experience for the whole, the whole community.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Yeah, Mark, I was out there on Saturday, and we heard nothing but positive comments, especially about the parking and the traffic, because historically that, that sometimes is, you know, on those peak times of the day, you know, where we get the, right around noon, when we get the peak traffic level with cars on 10th, everybody was really impressed with that. Great job.
Yeah, the Poppy Festival in general is just a great way of how our community comes together. And we don't know what to expect with our Lancaster weather, and we couldn't have asked for more beautiful weather. I mean, it truly was, it was hot, but it was, it was very, very nice, and a lot of people enjoyed it. And it's a nice way to, people to show their talents also in the arts, where we invite people to perform and dance. I think we had like a salsa group that was there also, and they did amazing. And it's just a great location for people to just enjoy and be family. So you guys did a great job. Thank you.
One quick thing, we always talk with staff about being calm, confident, and adaptable. And I think that people don't really see sometimes, it's like putting on a wedding. If you've gone through a wedding, you know all the things that went wrong, but the public does, or your guests don't see that. And I think one of the things I'm very proud of the staff is, is that there's 100 problems that occur every minute over the course, 100 over the course of the two days, and they get handled. And they just roll with the punches, deal with it, handle it, and they always have the public in mind of, you know, what will this do to the public? So it's really a pleasure to work with great people, and you have a great staff.
Yes, we do.
Can you give us an update on the leaps?
Yes, it's leaps, which is more commonly referred to as eye in the sky. It's coming along, it's on budget and on schedule. We are at the point where all of the equipment has been bought, all, virtually all of the integration has been done. The installation of equipment at the Sheriff's Department and on the plane is progressing nicely. And they will be doing communication tests and visual tests very soon. We've been targeting the very end of May for service of that, and I believe that we'll hit right around the end of May or the first week in June. Once we get to the point where the tests are completed, there will be a couple of public events, press conferences, if you will. We're very much looking forward to that. We think, we know that through the, quite honestly, the guts of the council to approve the project, we know it's going to work, but it took some, it took a lot to approve it. It gives our station, which has, which has to deal with more than probably any other city in California with the release of prisoners and parolees and stuff, it gives our law enforcement a tool that no other city will have in California, which is constant aerial surveillance. So we're very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the city council, city manager, and city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see that there are three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you. We do have two speaker cards. The first one is Michael Reeves.
Council comments. Agency comments. Cassandra?
Yeah, I had one comment. Mr. Reeves spoke about maybe a shuttle to, from Lancaster to, to I think the AV Mall, and I, I think we already handled that on the AVTA as part of public transportation. We've got regular service, and we've already looked into, you know, downscaling the vehicle use, so I know that it's just not feasible monetarily to, to use a small shuttle back and forth and get some kind of regular service, so the AVTA is always there to be able to take somebody from Lancaster to the mall on a regular basis.
And I think, Mr. Reeves, regarding the stadium for the University of Antelope Valley, I think that's more of a university situation with the city of Palmdale or Lancaster. That would not be a city of Lancaster item, so, but thank you for bringing that up. But I do want to make a comment, Robert, when you were mentioning about the graffiti on the Boulevard. It's truly emotionally draining in a positive, and sometimes a challenging way when you're an entrepreneur and you pour your heart into your business, and the city has spent so much money on the Boulevard to make it what it is today, and when we have people go in there and abuse it the way that they did, it was very, very upsetting. But our deputies is very, I mean, I applaud them for taking two days to find them, and that in itself gives a lot of comfort to the entrepreneurs of the sacrifice that they make every day to continue making the Boulevard as beautiful as it is. So again, we truly applaud our deputies for the hard work that they do, so thank you for sharing that with all of us, Robert. Appreciate.
I'd like to just comment on the election and what it was. I think this is, congratulations to Ken and Sandra in regards to the election, but this was one of the most clean information, you know, there was no hit mailers, there was no derogatory statements, and I commend you both for what you did and how you conducted yourself during the election, it was very good. The second thing is, the reason Rex isn't here, Mayor Paris isn't here, is due to his health, he is recovering from his surgery, and we'll just leave it at that, he's recovering and he's doing fine. The AVTA, me and Ken both sit on the board with the AVTA. The union at the AVTA did give the contractor, which is Violia, a notice that effective Thursday at 3 o'clock, that their contractor, their collective bargaining agreement is no longer valid. So any people that are making plans locally or commuting should have some type of backup plan effective Thursday after 3:00 PM, because even though it'll take us a couple days to get back up and running, if they do go on strike, you should have some type of backup plan for that. The Poppy Festival, I want to thank staff for what a great job you guys did, what a great job, and what a great representation of Lancaster, and how wonderful you guys make us all look.
I'd like to applaud to that. That was a great job.
The city was able to get the PBR bull riding for the 4th of July, so we'll have a 4th of July fireworks program with PBR rodeo. And the AVA QMD, that, for the first time, we no longer have or had any unhealthy air days with PM 2.5, so I thought that was a great thing with that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kitty.
The housing meeting is now adjourned.
And we'll adjourn the city council meeting until Tuesday, May 8th at 5:00. Thank you.